Welcome to Minot Talk.
We're live. It's Thursday afternoon. It's two P M. It's been a week since we've been on. We have a special guest, friend of the show, Leif Snyder here. We are ready to go.
Is my audio working?
I hope so.
Guaranteed, no.
It's yeah, it's it's uh or at very least we're crackly or something. I can I can feel.
As soon as you show up into our space, our system started going all haywire. It's it's crazy, man.
Falls apart.
I've been told that I'm the problem.
Yep, we're gonna go with that cuz it makes me feel better at least. Oh, everyone have a good Thanksgiving.
I did.
That's good. That's good. Jonathan, you you made it through it. That's all that matters.
Yeah, we're still here, man.
I love it. I I was I did had a great time, saw my aunt. We audio was working. I love to hear it. Oh, we got a lot to talk about today. Got a had a fun city council meeting happened last night. It was brief, which was.
Kyler's been calling this for weeks. Before every city council, he's like, oh, I think this is gonna be short. And most of the time he's wrong.
But more often, I remember the best one was that five hour meeting they had. I was like this.
I don't see anything that they can pull on this one. Five hours later.
So like like I was saying to you over text, if I say it every week, it's bound to be right eventually, right?
So you're calling an hour and a half meeting.
I called I called.
Okay, okay.
Five hours.
Okay, how long should a city council meeting be? Discussing the issues we're talking about, I think an hour and a half is probably too quick.
There was there was.
That's the thing.
That's exactly.
Some heavy stuff that's right in front of the city right now.
Also, not a shot at that five hour meeting either. That was like one of the most, it was one of the most productive meetings they had.
So if there's a five hour meeting, Kyler's mostly down for it.
I love it.
Except there was one, one of the first ones after the new city council went forever and Kyler was not loving it. I was out of town and he was texting me, this is still going on.
It was like the third or fourth one I went to and it was brand. Yeah, I was I was like, what is this? And I got indoctrinated into it and I love it. I'm ready to go. I couldn't be there last night, though, unfortunately. Had had to watch it live from home. But Leif, you were there, were you not?
I absolutely was. Got that crowd shot, saw Leif.
Exactly.
We need more of those, okay? Okay, uh, city engagement director, we need more crowd shots at at city council meetings.
I love seeing everyone. There was a full meeting, it looked like last night. It seemed like there was a lot of people in the building.
I'm sure there's a lot of people care about what's going on right now. The parking lot was full and.
That's as good as you can ask for. And it was a fairly eventful meeting, too.
Comment down below how long you think city council meeting should go.
Yeah, there we go. That's that's great. If you're watching, how long do you think it should last? Jonathan, what's your opinion? How long should a city council meeting last?
I agree with late that it varies based off the topics that are discussed, but I think an hour and a half is not that long. I think I think if every city council meeting, if that was the basis to determine whether something was long and short and an hour and a half was just normal, I think I'd be fine with that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that's fair. But also, but yeah, like on that same line, if you get to two, two and a half hours and it's all necessary things, it's great.
Yeah, I mean, that's the business of the city. Definitely needs to have the latitude to have longer meetings.
Hundred percent.
So, very cool. Rob Fuller says thirty minutes. Okay.
I love it, Rob. He's he's ready. You know, it's Monday night. It's all this thing. By the time they start, it's like dark out now.
Broncos won, so I'm sure somebody was excited about that. They won, right?
Yeah, they did. Yeah, I have a fantasy football story about that.
Oh, yeah?
I'm gonna derail this whole thing for about two minutes here.
Okay.
So coming into last night, I was down by about twenty four points in fantasy football. I had Denver's defense left. They didn't quite come back, but I I ended up losing by like two and a half points. It was so depressing. Chuba Hubbard wouldn't have fumbled at the end of the Carolina game. I'd have won. Would have locked in a.
That wasn't a two minute story?
I I cut.
And that was way more anticlimactic than I thought it was gonna be.
Condensed it so much, yeah. I I I figured this would. I I yeah, that's the thing. I didn't even win. That's the worst part about the story.
Story was Denver's defense almost got me to win.
Yeah, they all they they did better than I thought.
Jameis Winston is the legend of of football right now.
Ultimate gunslinger in today's day and age.
Love the guy.
Love to watch.
He is. Well, he's hilarious. I I don't even care about how he plays. I just care about his interviews.
He's he's a fun talk every time. Always something fun.
This is what we why we wanted you on today, Leif.
Yes, talk about football and.
Well, it's better than how my day started.
Yeah, what happened with your morning? Sounds like you had a fun morning.
Your morning was epic. Well, like typical pet owners, you let the dog out, right?
Of course, got to.
Now, keep in mind, I can't see that well. I called my, you know, I have a fenced in backyard.
Sure.
So I just opened the door, called my dog in and hit the door, threw me back and ran inside with a rabbit that isn't dead.
Oh, no. She's she's got she's got a mouthful.
The rabbit and then refused to engage in chasing the rabbit like it was in trouble.
Course.
So I had to chase the rabbit for twenty minutes around my house with a hockey stick.
Just white little fuzzball you're trying to catch up with.
Which isn't easy, believe me. Uh, so it.
It was a fun morning for you. Did you get it out? Did you find it or is it hiding somewhere?
My dog just must have lost the guilt because it decided to now catch the rabbit and that was the end of Bugs Bunny, so. The rabbit doesn't exist anymore. The rabbit still exists. It just doesn't have any more thoughts.
Yeah, the the soul has left the vessel. Yes.
Resting very peacefully today.
Indeed.
Well, we got a lot of good stories today.
I love it. It's been, like I said, we were off Thursday, so we're just ready to roll today.
You know what? Let me pull this up.
What are you gonna pull up real fast?
I don't know. Tell a story.
I'll tell a story. I'll find something to talk about here. Uh, real fast, yeah. City council started last night. What remember what Mayor Ross started off with? Very first thing you let into after like, you know, the pledge of allegiance and everything.
I believe it was a call out to uh continue the process to renew your liquor license.
Yes, which of course has been a bigger issue this uh this summer, I guess, for for the city of Minot, talking about expanding that or.
Oh, that's interesting.
Lifting the cap. And then Mayor Ross decided decided to call out the business owners that had yet to renew their licenses, which.
Not not by name.
No, not by not by yeah, not specifically because there's um I think forty that had, yeah, forty liquor licenses yet to renew for next year.
To be fair.
And they have until the end of this month, so.
If I had a business and I had to renew the liquor license, I also wouldn't have had it renewed yet.
Yeah, I I would like to say I would, but I know I'm a procrastinator, so I wouldn't have. I'm being honest.
So, my winners and complainers always a good good time.
Always.
Especially the two point O version.
You found a fun one, didn't you?
There was a person that posted in there. Their name is they're not the point of the story. Basically, calling out the public works department, seeing it's whack. Um, moving, we have a lot we're throwing out and starting over fresh instead. Ordered dumpster to be delivered Wednesday, the twenty seventh. So a day before Thanksgiving, right? From sanitation, made sure when I ordered it almost weeks early, we could keep it until Monday morning. So they wanted it Wednesday before and then they were gonna return it the Monday after Thanksgiving. Well.
So here are the two weeks.
Dumpster was delivered Wednesday, the twenty seventh, and due to holiday and other obligations Wednesday, they didn't do anything, not not the point of it. Um, but then Friday, I believe it was Friday, the dumpster was removed.
Oh, two days later.
Yeah, not the Monday they were hoping for.
Okay.
So they were quite not happy about this.
A little peeved by that.
So the the public engagement director is is big. All right, she does awesome.
She does.
Jen are for clean. So she's in there. She's saying, hey, I'm here. What do you need? Where's your what's your address? Doesn't get a reply. Me again, following up. Our team took a look. Order says drop off Thursday, pick up Friday. Our crew dropped off early for the holiday properly, faulted. What was logged for pickup? Still send your address if you believe there's a mistake. Comes back. Few minutes later, still me. Big love to my team. They're bringing a roll off in the morning. Best wishes on your move. So on Friday after Thanksgiving, she comes in big in the comment section, gets the dumpster back because somebody reached out.
Without him even confirming to get it back. She just said, here, here you go.
Yeah, and they also reached out to um uh the poster, reached out to the city manager who forwarded her email to a man named Jason. And so obviously Jason Swanson and so the whole city went city staff went worked together to get that happen. I and I think I think, you know.
On a holiday weekend.
On a holiday weekend. Cities deserve some love for that.
Yep.
I mean, I take some shots at the city every now and then, I think, so.
That's half what we do.
Yeah, I think you also gotta show them when they do something well.
When they do good stuff, we gotta call it out. That's a great move on their part.
And I do wanna give a shout out specifically to Jennifer Clean because she does a good job of monitoring that section, that 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 Facebook group and um reaching out when people are uh complaining or questioning different things that are happening and getting good information to them. So she does an awesome job there. I really think that's a great strategy by the city. So again, just kudos all around.
Oh, yeah. Great, great job. Love to see it happen. Love to see the issues get resolved in a really timely manner on a day that you have a pretty good excuse not to do it.
Right, yeah, that's a day you just don't wanna deal with problems. So now that we've been nice to the city, we can take our shots, right?
Of course. Let's let's roll into city council meeting. So right off the bat, obviously, uh Mayor Ross called out uh not not called out. That sounds too harsh. Reminded people that liquor licenses are due and there's a va- a majority that haven't submitted them yet. Moving off that, it was, there was a pretty brief meeting. You know, they went right into consent items after that, pretty much. Uh, three of them got polled. Uh, the couple of things that was Fuller and uh Bless them pretty much just thanking staff for making it a good process. Uh, the biggest one, I think, that they polled was the new purchase of a new garbage truck.
Yay.
Yes, and uh Rob Fuller, Alderman Fuller, was talking about, uh was questioning that and he asked, you know, some questions along why we do this right now. If they're having this maintenance issues, why do we need to do this every seven years kind of thing? And lo and behold, sounds like city of Minot typically replaces one truck a year. They have a full fleet of seven, so usually every seven years. Yeah, it's yeah. Unfortunately, it does sound like they have more maintenance issues than we'd like to see, especially with those automated arms that sounded like. I know Alderman Blessam was talking about it as well. Um, but lo and behold, new garbage truck coming, so hopefully have a little bit less of those.
Is the automated arm worth it? In the winter, it's gotta be, but that's probably.
I bet that's one of the.
Most problems.
Exactly. And then when in the winter, you when you have a problem, it probably compounds it more so in that.
What I've heard is that in the winter, manual arms also have problems too, so. Well, I was just gonna say, I have a different take on that, considering everybody knows manpower shortages. Can you imagine how hard it would be to say, hey, you wanna come ride around the back of a garbage truck this winter? Negative two, though. Some days. That's a job that.
A little chilly.
Kudos to those that those that used to do it, but I don't know. Yeah, that'll make you tough.
Props to our garbage men in town. You guys are lifesavers. You do the dirty work that we uh cannot.
Okay, going with the pun there? The dirty work? Wow, I don't even think you tried. You're so good at puns. You didn't even try.
I get that from my brother, I think.
So brothers are four.
Oh, okay. My brother, my brother is the chief of dad jokes. It's amazing.
Dude, I I think eventually we're gonna talk about something substant.
Substantive on this episode.
We're we're taking our time.
We're getting there. Uh, there was, they they had a uh topic about some of the public sidewalks. Lance Meyer had a big presentation about it.
Sounds about right. Widening driveways.
Yeah, widening some driveways and stuff.
I think the commercial version matches now the residential version, I think, was.
Yeah, big, big. Most of the, yeah, big, big presentation there. So that went uh big in quotations. It was like fifteen minutes in this meeting. It took up more time than normal.
As far as a Lance presentation, it's short.
There you go. You said it. Next, after that, they um talked, I think we'll wait to talk in depth about the Broadway Circle and Project B and everything till the end.
Whatever you say, sir.
But they had an item on that where they pushed back the date on it. After that, there was talk about a new utility district in town.
What is that?
So it's pretty much just changing the districts from, it was originally set up for townhomes.
And it's a special assessment district.
Yep, yep. And they already have some of the construction and piping and plumbing done for what would be townhomes, but now the developer one wanted to change them from townhomes into single family homes. So they would have to issue a special assessment onto that district of they estimated six to twelve thousand dollars per lot and that would be then forwarded on to the eventual homeowners.
So like there are school districts, there are utility districts that run similarly.
Yes.
And then the special assessments would be applying to that.
Just to that utility district specifically, yep. And there were some talk about it. Uh, I know Alderman Pittner was like the idea of having some single family homes built. Um, you had Alderman Fuller Bless them come out against it, saying, hey, this is still gonna be, ended up getting footed by the homeowner in the end anyways. And is this the best way to bring new single family homes into the city kind of thing? And lo and behold, it was a, it failed. It was a two to five vote against.
It's an interesting uh breakdown right there. Two to five.
I know. Yeah, it was uh I think it was Pittner and Ross for four and everyone else was against. So see, I assume those are still townhomes that will eventually be built there, if anything, at this.
Where's that at, do you know?
Northwest side of town.
Northwest.
I believe um I could be wrong. I believe it's by um Polaris Park, kind of a little bit northwest of that.
Okay.
I believe I could be wrong, but I think that's where.
Closer to the almost Ramstead area.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, right, right behind Ramstead. I think.
You could be right. Yeah, I think I think I think he could be right. Yeah, on that.
Okay, I know what you're talking about. There's apartments over there, too?
Yeah, yeah. The, yeah, and so that's not gonna happen, at least as of yet, but.
And so basically, it's the easy way to look at it is it's twenty thousand dollars for a lot, then ten thousand dollars on top of it.
Yep.
So it's either a thirty thousand dollar lot or a twenty thousand dollar lot with ten thousand special assessment.
Yep, so take your take your pick, pretty much. Yeah. And then, yeah, probably townhomes versus single family homes. I'm a pears guy, actually.
You, the more I learn about you, the more I wonder.
Exactly. Did you make the right choice? We're in too deep now.
But I can't go back.
Uh, it was fun. Then, uh, the last real agenda item, cuz it was a brief meeting, uh, was them officially approving amendments made to the park district half cent sales tax amendment.
Yay, we get a vote again. Aren't you, aren't we excited? However, there's a kind of surprise with this one. I guess I was caught off guard.
Sure, yeah.
Break it down, Leif. Okay, originally, no, I'm not gonna tell people how to vote. This is an election. They can vote themselves, right?
Yep, will be in June of twenty twenty five.
I have to quit. I was a hard no. And keep in mind, I'm a hockey guy. Okay, I I like what Mesa's accomplished. I like I like what the park district does. But now the cap, they're they're, I can't remember how much they're gonna lower the mills, so it's.
It's like a hundred fifty bucks a year for like a two hundred fifty thousand dollar home, give or take.
Their cap will be lower and then after the five year cap, it can go back up. Well, now it's turned into a twenty year cap, so the trade off is much greater.
Yep.
Now, some people don't like the word sales tax. Here's what I do like about it. And I'm gonna catch some flak for this, but how many people outside of Minot benefit from the use of park district properties?
True.
From the base?
Yep.
From Surrey, from Berthold, from Kenmare, from.
Not just in Ward County. You can go down to Max and McHenry County, up to Granville up north. You have a lot of communities that come to Minot.
So is this a way to spread the burden of having to pay for this stuff? Is is it a?
Do you like it?
Warfare? I, at one time, there was talk of getting rid of property tax. Someone, I think it was Chuck Emery who was running. He didn't win the last time he ran. But he was throwing the idea out there that maybe the park district shouldn't be funded by property tax. It should all be sales tax.
Yeah. And this half cent sales tax would be permanent for the park board if it were to.
Yeah, there is no cap on that. It doesn't sound.
It would be a permanent, like I know Alderman Bless them pointed that out. It would be a permanent thing that would be um the an eternal thing with for the park boards of funding.
But like, that's something that has to be considered. Should all of the park district properties be on, you know, the backs of Minot residents only? Take, for instance, what do they call it? The outdoor recreation area?
I believe so. I think.
On your way out to Burlington.
Yeah, yeah, on the west side there.
I hate to say this, but let's call it what it is. It's a future golf course.
Sure.
Okay, there's a big parking lot there. Those aren't paved trails for outdoor hiking. Those are cart paths. The golf course is planned because the next time we have a flood with the flood infrastructure that's in place, service isn't gonna fare well. And it'll probably be their last.
That would be their big one.
Right. Why do you make me excited for it to flood again?
Stop, stop it. Wrong words.
But that's that's what it is. It's it's a potential future golf course. Those people out there don't pay perk district property taxes.
Okay.
So that's the, cuz that's outside the city.
City limits, sure, okay.
I suppose they could be annexed into that, but as I understand it, cuz I know some people who live out there.
At least a lot of them are outside of city.
Park district property taxes.
Okay.
So is that really fair? Is that a question? No, they're gonna have to pay a half cent sales tax.
Yep.
If this goes through, but that's where it's up to voters.
Yep.
But keep in mind, not those voters, cuz they don't get to vote.
That's the thing.
So it seems like out of all the property tax authorities, that the Minot parks makes the most run off of sales tax.
Yeah, I feel like that would work out.
There was that one resident that was not excited about the idea of having to pay more sales tax and saying that maybe they'd take their purchases elsewhere. They can vote. They can vote with their feet and do exactly as they said. They can not participate. But the catch twenty two for them is if, so edge of Ward County, so just say you're uh like on the southern edge, just say that you're just barely almost living max, but you're barely in Ward County.
The radar base.
Yeah, live at the radar base. Like, you're really gonna go to Bismarck, which is also raising their sales tax potentially? Is that really going to be the option? Like, what are you, where are you gonna go? And I think that's, I'm not saying that that's a good thing. I think, I'm just saying that's a like obvious thing. Like, you can talk about going somewhere else, but it's gonna probably cost more to go somewhere else.
Like unless Minot's sales tax revenue went down so drastically the following years, if if it were to be implemented, I I couldn't, I I don't think there would be enough of a voting against it on their feet to buy elsewhere to make enough of an impact on the city. It would be hard to like people obviously, I I definitely think it will happen, too. Like, you're gonna have people that will go elsewhere, but what what dollar figure?
Already you do.
I mean, if, exactly.
For Sam's Club and and Costco and stuff like that, you already have people making quarterly grocery runs instead of shopping in Minot.
Or on the flip side, people from the eastern part of Montana that come to Minot to shop for things, too, and they'll be tax exempt regardless cuz they're a Montana resident.
Yep.
So.
Yep. Does North Dakota honors that?
At least they did when I used to work retail.
Okay.
Been a few years, but I'd assume they still do.
Yeah, you need to go get me a Montana driver's license.
Heck, yeah. Just move across the border, right? Fairview, Sydney, perfect. But uh, that all got approved, so there will be that twenty year cap uh and for the.
But I I on that discussion, though, like, how how will that, do you, do you see that making, like, I think you were saying no, but Leif, do you see that making much of an impact of people beginning to shop elsewhere? Do you like, like, that, that sounds like something you do the first month and then you realize how ridiculous it is and you're like, it's really not that big of a deal? Well, okay, what what instance is sales tax higher? Do people say I'm gonna go to the bar and have a beer, which that sales tax is higher?
Mm hmm.
Like, I think it's a cent or a cent and a half higher. Yeah, there's a liquor. The soda you buy at the convenience. There's a liquor tax or whatever. Yeah, so do people think about that?
Yeah.
I know people run to Bismarck, like you said. I know people that make six figures that wanna save fifty bucks and run to Bismarck.
Make it happen.
But but there, see, the people that, all right, this is my personal opinion, okay? This is not maybe fact based.
Yeah, he's gotta preface that.
But but the people that do that want the experience of shopping at Costco and Sam's Club. That's what they want. You can't tell me that you're saving like unless if you're going down in your like cheap gas car, which then you won't have room for the stuff you're buying. Like, like, how much money are you actually saving? You just took four hours out of your day extra, just in drive time. You just spent thirty to fifty bucks um on gas, thirty bucks on gas. Like, did you, how much did you really save in that trip? If you're making six figures, it seems like your time would be worth a little bit. Yeah, but I think you're right. It's also about getting out of town, doing something different. I'll I'll be honest. I shop at one of the most expensive grocery stores I know, cuz it's a glorified convenience store.
Yeah.
But I will support them. I'm there every day.
Here, yeah.
Because it's convenient for me. I can't drive, obviously, so I can walk a few blocks.
Pick up.
And, yeah, I spend fifty cents more on a can of soup than at a bigger store, but I'm grateful that they're there. I don't want clothes.
That's the nice thing is having those little kind of conven- local in community convenience stores.
Yep, those are good. We need more seven elevens.
Yeah, exactly. More things like seven eleven.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. We don't have a seven eleven.
Well, yeah, that's.
Okay, interesting, yeah. It'll be interesting to see what what happens if people actually make that trip to Bismarck. I just don't see it fully happening. And then it was good for finance director Lakefield to point out in Aldo woman Lisa Olson, Lisa Olson also helped with this um making sure that it's understood that this doesn't apply to the big box purchases such as uh I guess out of the box cars and and combines and stuff like that.
Yeah, what they were talking about.
Right, yeah. If you buy a big TV, it still might apply to that. That's a big box purchase.
This is true. Never know. Well, they're not as big as they used to be. Conversation, we're not going there. Anyways.
Um, also, just a couple of comments are made by Alderman Rob Fuller and Alderwoman Lisa Olson um on the developer conversation, on the uh utility district conversation. Alderman Fuller just means the developer will have to pay to remove the utilities they're talking about. Himself instead of the city fronting the money and Alderman Olson, the developers can still pay to make the conversion.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for that clarity. So it's still not a guarantee it'll be townhomes. It's up to the developer to decide if they want to pay for the changes needed to the utilities to switch it to the single family homes instead of special assessing it.
Yeah.
So there's still a chance. It's just up to them at this point if they wanna spend the money per lot to do it.
Right.
Fair enough. Well, I appreciate, as always, appreciate the clarity on that.
Yep.
And do we have any last takes on the sales tax?
I think I'm good.
Referendum? That'll be in June.
June. I just, I hate that it's a special election. That's my one thing. I think that people are gonna struggle with one, voting to implement a sales tax, even if it is to save property tax. I think it's hard to vote for a tax right now. And two, I hate that it's a special election. There's nothing they could do about that. Hate might be too strong of a word. Um, but yeah, I'm I'm not a fan of the special election.
Fair enough. That's reasonable.
I'll just add that the reason this is the city is the park district cannot by themselves levy a sales tax.
Yep.
Which is probably a good thing. Kind of a cooperation with the city. That's why this came to be.
Yeah, the city has to all is pretty much allowing the park district to go to the residents, the citizens to decide if they can do it or not.
Right. Yep, and the and we talked about that, I believe, when it first came up about the city's role in it. It doesn't need to make sure it falls process. It's not their I don't think it's really their viewpoint that they should be for or against it. Just make sure that operationally it's done well.
Facilitators of it.
Yep. The citizens now. Yeah, right.
If we think the park board should allow a half cent sales tax or not. So June coming up next year.
What's next?
At that point, we can, I think, go over to the Broadway Circle and the whole Project B situation. Leading off, I know uh there was talk about the whole, well, not talk, so on the actual agenda item, the construction company is pushing back the completion date for the apartments to April of twenty twenty five. So be a little bit of an extra delay on there, not like it's a whole nother year, but won't be done this December. We'll be looking like springtime kind of thing. That was approved. Uh, city council was fine with that. Uh, one little thing that happened, I know the company uh wanted to split the cost of the extra insurance that would be needed. Um, and I think that was that was all turned, the city, he requested the city to make an amendment to do so, and the city didn't end up amending anything. So fun with that, April. However, though, the bigger thing that was brought up was at the end, when they were talking about the requests uh for the bid requests that came up. Uh, so earlier this year, I think back in August, they proposed uh they they put out an RFP for companies to come take over, whether it be the management of the shelter that will be there, the management of the already companies that are there, or it be um the eventual low income housing apartment complex that'll be there. They they were trying to find people to come in and do that. And lo and behold, uh, they kinda struggled with it. Um, they they did end up getting one bid for one of them and it didn't really go the way the city wanted. So lo and behold, they're gonna end up, it's it's all coming back to council now. Um, and they they ended up talking about it to try to see how they wanted to proceed from here. So it sounds like they're gonna get another request out. Um, they were talking, they had some different options out there. Do we wanna try and, you know, can we exempt them from the property tax? I think it's like a hundred eighty thousand in property taxes uh a year or yes, property taxes a year that they would be getting from the facilities. But at the same time, uh, it's not like it's the city's job to run this whole thing either. And they gotta try to find someone to get off of it from. Well, not get off of it necessarily, but to manage it for them.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, they should figure out somebody that just wants to buy it, yeah.
That would be the best case.
That would be the best case.
But it's just, yeah, one of those things, are they gonna end up?
Making those numbers work for a for profit entity is gonna be tough. Yeah, especially now. That's the whole, so. What's the solution, Leif? You've thought about this. Somebody big in the community who is uh dreaming of running a nonprofit, come forward, I guess. I do not know. I don't have the answer to this. Yeah.
Cuz it doesn't sound.
Why so many people are saying, oh, this is, this is a mess when when we all first learned about what was going on.
And I know they were talking about trying to do some, what was it? A lure, a land use restriction agreement, so they could try to like finesse part of the, part of the property to be like tax exempt for property taxes, just floating some ideas out there to try to, try to maybe entice some people into doing some of that. And I know this was mentioned at city council, too, so I think it's relevant to bring up. Um, and I don't necessarily disagree with it, but I know Alderman Bless them said that he doesn't think it's the. Um and I don't necessarily disagree with it, but I know Alderman Blessam said that he doesn't think it's the city's prerogative to run a homeless shelter. Uh if you guys have any takes on that, or you agree with that?
I would, I would agree with Blessam there, but things can always change.
For sure. Like it's just gonna be, it would just be another money pit for the city to have to keep up with, especially having, being forced to take it over from Project B, but how many?
But a- at what point does that change? At what point do we see so many homeless people? That now we decide, oh, you know what? Maybe the city needs to take care of this or something. Talking to a friend, they said, hey Leif, what do you suppose this is? And she was in Oak Park. And it was a vehicle, she describing it to me, there was a vehicle parked in between two trees strategically, so you couldn't get the doors open. And I thought for a minute, I thought, it sounds like a homeless person, possibly a female was probably sleeping in it and didn't want the doors to be open.
Sure.
Like, and then the car's gone, of course, later. But a- at what point does everything get to the point where people start to say, oh, we got a bigger problem than we thought?
Yeah, for sure. And I think in Minot, there's, lo and behold, it gets cold here. So there's a lot of the year where if people are homeless and they don't expect to not be homeless, they probably have a forethought to try and, for lack of a better term, migrate to somewhere warmer. But at the same time, there's a lot of people that don't have that choice and aren't able to move, make that move, so. And I, I know I had a client from my um talking about how they're working for a church and doing some volunteer work for a church, taking Thanksgiving meals to different homeless people around the community. And they went to some of the places that they frequent outside, no one was there, so they had to go and try to dig out and find where they were at and find them in some different buildings where they were taking shelter and I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't like this government handling things that it shouldn't, but at the same time is this a problem that, I don't know. I don't know where to go with this one. This is, this is one of those, one of those heartstring issues where you gotta have you gotta weigh everything hard with it. Cuz I think the homeless shelter is different from the low income uh apartment complex and also from the commercial buildings too, properties that are associated with it.
Keep in mind, the city could have said, okay, we're done and over with.
Don't want any of this.
But how much of that NDR grant? Is based on us following through with our promises, our pledges.
Exactly.
To do exactly this.
That's, that's a fair point. So on the flip side, all of a sudden could, is, is the city then having to cover all those extra costs if something were to not go through?
So I have a random topic.
Let's hear it.
Did you guys read the article by Rob Port about the Indy State Fair Foundation?
I did not.
I haven't read it, but I know what it's about.
It's about Epic?
Yes.
Okay, I saw the headline of it.
How, how come?
So.
The, it's not the whole country club. It's the two parcels that the country club building is located on and the parking lot.
Yeah.
But how did it come to be? That the North Dakota Fair Foundation owns that property?
Yeah, so North Dakota State Fair Foundation is five oh one three, five oh one C three. This is directly from the article. Nonprofit organizations, organization founded as its name applies to support the North Dakota State Fair in Minot. Now the foundation is expected to dissolve soon after an unusual business deal between the foundation and the Minot Country Club organized by Epic Company's founder Todd Burning went south. So that's the immediate punch. The arrangement involved directing tax deductible donations to the foundation which were then used to purchase part of the land the country club organizes. So, and there was a, so the uh organization that owns the country club is a five oh one C seven. So you could make a donation to the five oh one C three, which was tax deductible, and then there could be payments that were funneled to, it was Gulf Minot Inc. And so then it, and then those ones aren't tax deductible.
And Gulf Minot has an address of where?
Alright, what is it?
Uh I can't remember, but it's the, the epic building, the brown brick building on Verdic.
Nice, of course.
So that's an interesting, it's definitely worth a read, obviously. Uh there's a lot of people that are not commenting on it. Um there's a, the current board president uh for the NESF Foundation is commenting on it cuz they're trying to clean it up, but it's anticipated that they're gonna dissolve. It sounds pretty messy. Sounds like some
Yikes.
Potentially weird stuff was going on.
Like, potentially the board didn't know about this purchase? Or only certain, or only certain members of the board did? Who, I think, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't Todd Burning on that board?
He was at one point.
One point at least. Interesting.
In February two thousand twenty four, the Ward County have attempted to execute a judgment, found no funds available in Gulf Minot's bank account. Just, just crazy stuff going on.
Yeah, where's all their money at?
Some, yeah, like there was, I think over six hundred thousand invested in Gulf Minot, and then when they went to do a judgment, there was nothing in there. Uh same address, four hundred tenth street southeast address in Minot's Gulf Minot and Burning Southern Ventures is what you're referring to. So just some weird things. It's kind of an interesting read uh about that. Everyone's always in for a good epic update.
Story, exactly.
So there's one for you.
Those epic, epic stories. But that, that's, that's crazy. That'll be interesting to see how that continues to develop.
I don't see any development on it. It's been awfully quiet.
This is the development.
This is, this is definitely a side.
Yeah.
Side shot, though. This is not a, this is not one thing you expected to come of it. This is not the next step.
That's interesting, yeah. That'll be weird. I don't know how, yeah, I wonder where the state fair will go with that, if anywhere, if they're just gonna try to ignore it the best they can.
Yeah. So.
That's crazy.
Interesting. Alright, we have a, we have a big topic that we, we're gonna end off, end with, right?
Yeah, I think so.
And that's the, just a little more analysis on something that's been going on around mine. I, I think it's a police investigation or something like that.
Something, something little.
Nobody's talking about it.
Yeah, nobody's been talking about it. Nobody's interested in it.
No one cares.
But we figured we had talked about it since.
It was talked about at City Council last night.
Yeah. It was, there was a, explain that.
So, City Council and public appearances last night, uh a lady by the name of Barb McPeak, who was mentioned uh quite a few times in the report, uh came up to speak. She was a former, I think, manager of the dispatch services, and then she retired and a couple of years after retirement, wanted to come back and try and be the assistant, I believe, at that point. And she ran into some issues with the hiring process. Fast forward to the investigation, she agreed to be a part of it. Uh you have that whole mess kinda transpire a little bit. And now she, she, the investigation finishes, she comes forward to the council and she has complaints that the investigation was taking some of her words out of context, that the investigation was she, maybe is not, she, she wasn't feeling validated with her concerns from it, but speaking with Alderman Fuller, she said she was afterwards. Um she feels a lot of stuff was taken out of context a little bit. Um she questioned statements that were made about her from a different uh department head that commented about her. And she also wanted to state that she felt like it was, her comments were attacking Klug more than she wanted to. She just was more saying that she was confused why she was not picked to be that next assistant director. That a pretty good summary of it?
I think so.
Fair. Of, of what her comments were at least at the podium, yeah.
Yeah, that's fair. Yeah, so it's created this awkward thing though, because whatever her feelings are, I think it more than anything represents the feelings of a lot of people that were named in this report, that do not feel like they were uh accurately characterized.
Yeah.
And the proof of that would be Harold Stewart's willingness to let her submit changes and it'd be forwarded on to be that, and there's no guarantee that there will be actually changes made to the official report. But it gives the people the opportunity to.
Out of doubt.
It's very he- here's the deal, here, I, I, I wanna state where I'm at on this report.
Let's hear it.
And, and I'd love to hear where you guys would stand on it.
Please.
I'm not at the point of, okay, Klug needs fired, whatever. I do think that it's very hard for Klug to come back after this investigation. It didn't matter what the report said. It was just gonna be very hard for him to come back.
Yeah, just.
But I am frustrated. My pure frustration comes from the quality of the report. It felt very low quality. And you're wanting us as a city to trust this investigative report when you have I mean, there's the, like, the literal grammar quality and all that. There's the angles that are taken in it that just seem so unnecessary to the point of what the investigation is.
At least from how we see it.
When you go and you, but I think when you go and you say, alright, this is what we're investigating, and then you go and you read the report, and one, one of the things is that they're supposed to be investigating is uh retaliation. There's nothing in the report about retaliation one way or the other.
Yeah, there's like a paragraph that says uh
That wasn't the point of the investigation. That was not the point of the investigation. The point of the investigation of retaliation was, what did it happen in the police department? And what's included in the report is that uh city manager says, hey, if you participate in the investigation, then there won't be any retaliation against you. And, and that wasn't the point of the investigation.
Yep.
Okay, that, that's good that that happened. So I, I feel like there's just some things that are just like, why are they even here?
Yeah.
It doesn't add up. That's my frustration with it. It's not a deal of like if, me personally, I could almost care le- less or couldn't care less what happens with Klug, okay? Well, that needs to be determined by the city manager, by people that are close to it, that have a really great feel of the situation.
Yeah, people that know Klug, worked with him daily and can try and grasp if he would be the best guy to come back in for it.
My personal frustration stands from the side of, it just seems like you want us to trust this, but it's really hard to trust this when as I pointed out several times, when you get to the crux of the whole matter, you can't even form a proper sentence to let us know what should happen with the guy.
Yeah, you're, 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 like you said, the pivotal paragraph on it comes to a head and we, we can't tell if it's saying one thing or the other. And I, I, I remember when we were looking over it uh like a week ago Sunday, and we were kinda talking about it. That was one of the first things that came up to us, and we were like, are we seeing this wrong?
Yeah, like, am I such an idiot that I don't know how to read an investigative report?
I, I, I'm not a professional lawyer. I, I don't have law degree or anything.
Also not a non-professional law lawyer. I am not a lawyer.
Exactly, that's fair. I have no law degree, so I mean, if there's, I'm missing something, I won't say I'm not, but like, if we can pick this apart, like
Right, yeah.
Come on.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I just wanna make that clear. I, we had a really good conversation with Fuller. Alderman Fuller, who was heavily named in the investigation and obviously had a pivotal part in the investigation. And I, I, that, that was a good conversation. If you haven't listened to it, I think it'd be worth going back and listening to it. But those are my, those are the questions that remain on my end. So let's roll it around the table.
Leif?
I have a problem with, I mean, we paid fifty thousand dollars for this report.
So, at least so far.
Yeah, that's a scary thing, another fifty.
That's how much some people make in like two months.
Must be nice. Must be nice.
I gotta stop chasing rabbits. True. Okay, so how do you take a, is it a valid report? How do, how do I trust the validity of it?
Yeah, right. Break it down.
When right away, the first action that the city manager takes is, oh, there's a lot of mistakes in it. Come forward with your mistakes so we can make it right.
Yeah.
I had one person who's named in the report reach out to me personally, asking me what should I do?
Wow.
And I'm like, I don't, you know, at, at the time she was thinking about going to the podium, it wasn't Barb, it was someone else. But like, I just, I don't have full faith in the report when, like we mentioned before the show. It, it seemed to me, and I would agree with the notion that why is Rob Fuller, Councilman Fuller, being called out for going after the police department?
Yeah.
Like, and now, this is just hypothetical, cuz I do not believe, listening to Rob talk earlier in the show or the previous shows.
Yeah.
I don't think he did. That's not why he ran for office. But hypothetically, what if he did?
Sure.
What's wrong with that?
Yeah, even if that was his.
I ran for city council, I didn't win. But I was very public about the fact that I know there's an HR problem in the city of Minot, in all the departments for the most part. What's wrong with that? Maybe I wanna fix potholes, maybe I wanna change garbage collection.
Yeah.
That was my hill to die on if I wanted it to be.
Sure.
Uh do I have good reason for that? I think a lot of this revolves around HR problems. Like, it just does. Quite a while ago, I had the HR director call me out and ask me to come spar with her in her office in person. That tells me there's a problem. Now, what we know, or at least I know, to be fact, and I brought this up with city council. The HR director covered for the former, her friend, the airport director.
Sure.
Okay, and withheld that information from me. I learned later that it wasn't forwarded to me. I asked for, when the previous city manager was going through that mess. And the rumor came out that there were three city department heads that supposedly were gonna be fired.
Sure.
So I made a request of all the city department heads and their HR files, basically, any complaints. I got one in the request, and that was for Zakiyan.
Sure.
Okay, it wasn't a big of a deal, okay, whatever. Never got anything else. Then the notes came out for the, the investigation into Tom Berry. The previous city manager.
Yep.
And hours before, I got an email from Lisa Junt saying, oh, I'm sorry, we forgot this in your original request. And what was it? It was the HR investigation into then Airport Director Rick Felder.
Okay.
So we know that people are willing to break state law in order to cover for people. Now, my expertise on human resources is not that great. I don't have a, a degree in that field or anything, but
You're, you're not a professional HR?
But there's a, there's a breakdown, there's a problem with the reporting process. There's only one method to go about it, and that's up. And now, when you take employees who basically are in their position for retirement benefits, let's face it, most old guys on the totem pole are not making a lot of money. Like you guys.
You're not wrong.
This is fair.
How'd you know?
But
It's fun.
They, if they stymie their growth, they're in trouble. Their opportunity for advancement. And if I report my boss is doing something wrong.
Yeah.
It can be done and over with.
Sure.
You need more than one venue to report.
So, yeah, so, so you're going.
Like the third party reporting, I, I would agree with that.
Do you think it'd be effective?
Yes and no. Okay, and here's where my expert, my expertise, where, where I learned this. My, going back quite a few years, when I, when I was on the Board of Directors of the Hockey Boosters.
Yeah.
I was the, the chosen person to implement the Safe Sport program with USA Hockey, working with USA Hockey. That was around the, the whole Penn State fiasco and all that stuff.
Yep.
So we had to take steps to protect participants and kids. And working with USA Hockey, we decided, okay, this is what has to be done. There has to be multiple methods to report stuff, because if a parent has a complaint about me as a coach or me as a board member or the program director, at any point it can be stopped. And there can be retaliation against that family or that person or that.
Yeah, one way or the other.
So as the Safe Sport guy, I had to implement a lot of rules. I was not the most favorite guy at the rink, put it that way. But you could come to me.
Yep.
You could go to the state guy. You could go nationally. You, like, you didn't even have to report it in Minot.
There were multiple channels.
Multiple ways to go about it. And that has to be possible.
I, I don't think it's, like, Fuller gets called out and whatever. But I, I don't think it's that bad that you go to a city councilman, alderman, older woman. And say, hey, there's problems. Yeah, that's part of what the rule is. And so I, I think it's really interesting that like the investigator really wanted us, the city of Minot, to not have that process in place. That it always, like, the council would go and refer them to a third party before it ever even got brought up the food chain. Like, that's, that's interesting. I, I think they should, I think you should be able to do that. It feels like you have an advocate.
Completely so.
And that's exactly what the people said. Like, it, it felt like what I said, he actually listened to what I had to say. And whether they're saying, like, I this is not throwing shots at anybody, but whether they're saying the truth or not, whether these people, whatever it might be, who knows, okay? That's not the job of the councilman, the councilman or alderman, then job is to say, hey, this, these are concerns, somebody needs to look into this, and let it be verified other than him. But, but you voted somebody in place, so that way you could have a voice, and now that you have that voice, they're saying, no, we should use a third party.
These are at-large representatives of the city. If you're a resident in the city of Minot, you should be able to take, in theory, anything to these people to complain about.
Now, having the, I, I think you wanna say something, but before that, I do also wanna say, having an actual third party system, I don't think that's a bad idea. Having there being a protocol, and maybe there needs to be a better protocol put in place when somebody comes to city council and all that, that might be good things that would have, that would, uh, good things to When somebody comes to city council and all that, that might be good things that would have, that would, uh, good things to happen. But I don't think that we should remove the part where somebody feels like they can't go to city council. Because they're just going to get spit back to know you have to call this number.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I, that's a fair point. You gotta have the ability to have that too. I, I fully agree. Leif, you have any last, last takes on the department investigation before I start yelling about stuff?
I will say this, I know this investigation involves the police department and chief Klug. I don't think it ends there. I think there's a morale problem with this kind of stuff all throughout the city.
So you think it's, you think it's, when you say it doesn't end there, you're not saying it goes deeper in the police department. You'd say it goes deeper in the city across other departments.
Yeah. And that's why I went to the podium last time I did. Uh, all the stories I mentioned, well, not all, I didn't, I only get five minutes. I didn't, because the investigation would already started with the police department. So I stayed clear of anything to do with the police department. Everything I mentioned involved departments other than the police department. And I'll be honest, I've talked to some employees. It's, it's pretty disturbing. I, I won't go into further detail because they're, I consider them victims. And it's just the reporting process is not. If you want to be in the HR field, you've got to love policy and stop wanting to be everybody's friend. And like, there has to be changes. It. Something has to be done. Now, it is interesting if this investigation came out, we haven't heard much about it, but. The proposed half cent safety. Sales tax that could come about, like, it's going to be hard to get voters behind this if they don't have faith in.
I don't think that's going to happen.
So my thought was, at what point do we own the movie rights to this? Like, could you? You read that investigation, it's kind of like a movie.
It's a whole soap opera. I love it. We'll get, we'll get all, get him, get all the Minot people, the, that company that, uh, made all those weird western, not weird, those western movies from North Dakota.
Yeah, I'm sure that the Department of Commerce would, would get you a grant to help with it.
Yeah, they'd love to give it to us right now, right? But I, I'll piggyback off of what you were saying, kind of a little bit. And that's in the whole perception of, of the situation. And I, I, I think so much of it goes back to, I agree with what Jonathan was saying. I care less what happens with Klug. I, I, we don't know him. I've, he's probably a great guy and he. It's probably.
I've heard a lot of people say a lot of great things about him.
And he probably, like the investigation says, did make the right decisions at the right times.
In, in some cases.
Most cases.
I, I will stop you. Just the term shadow files.
Yeah, I want to talk about that specifically. I, I do want to come back and talk about shadow files.
I think that's a good topic to get on to, but I, I just think that there's, regardless of investigations takes on it, I, I think there's such a. Bigger issue here. And that's regardless of Klug coming back or not, there is a morale issue. You can say that Klug did all the right decisions and he probably did, but if the people that work there don't perceive them as the right decisions. And you can't convince them otherwise, at what point does perception become reality? And I'm not saying that. May, maybe Klug is, is the right choice to be the guy to continue on there. I'm not saying he's not, but also. Do you, do you want to think about expanding and grabbing someone completely out of the box to do it too?
So your mic's about to fall off. Um, you just need to raise it because it, it probably won't fall. Yeah, there's. Yeah, so. I, no, it's not all the way in still. You're gonna have to push it in further. Um, but. How long till he can retire with?
I think it's a year and a half.
Year and a half. Yeah, I think it's a year and a half or so. And that's what's really interesting about it. Because even with him coming back. Unless if he wants to go beyond that, I don't know what his plan was. But there's a good chance that he was looking at a year and a half, two years being a target where maybe he would begin to heavily consider retirement. That's typically how it works in those areas. I'm not speaking for him, I'm just speculating.
Generally how it is.
Right. So it's a really interesting spot in his career for him. It's not like he has 10 years left and it's like, okay, what are we going to do next? So what, how does it work if he comes back? I'm, I'm thinking that he has to come back and have like, all right, these are, this is my plan. I, I get that there's issues. This is my plan. Can we, can we get people to buy into this plan? If we can, then that might be an avenue for him to be able to get back. Um, and also retain trust and, and gain trust. Uh, from people. Um, but yeah, I don't know.
Flip side of that, I fully couldn't blame him if he didn't want to come back to it either.
I, I wouldn't blame him at all.
Everything that's transpired for better or worse, I. I probably wouldn't want to come back into that situation either.
Right. That, and so that's kind of like the overall view, but in the report. And I know we talked about a little bit last, about it. Sorry, we talked a little bit about it last week. We talked about it with Alderman Fuller. Um, we've reached out to others, um, and we're in talks about how that would look. But like one of the commentators, Dan says, I have a problem with the 72 hour notice for the drug test people got. For the drug pills, like stuff like that is kind of like, okay, that, that does fall in leadership eventually. And stuff like that's weird. The shadow files you mentioned that we're going to talk about, that, that's weird. Someone, how, how the, how the discipline was handed out. I mean, there, there's some stuff that would potentially get you fired from a private sector job pretty easily. Not because you're working for somebody with strong moral values, just because it's like, I don't think I want that associated with my brand. Let alone being in the police. And that's been allowed in the, in the, and so. I, I just, there are that portion and it's typically, when it comes down to it, that falls on the top of command. Like that's, that's where it goes all the way up the food chain, whether you like it or not. And it's not about that it happened under your watch. It's about how you react to it. That's all that matters. And that, I mean, if it's a consistent problem, if it's a recurring problem, then it's like, okay. So it's, there's room for this to happen in your leadership. But typically people are looking like, okay, this happened. What are you going to do about it? What's your response to it? And it seems like a lot of times. Responses were a little passive.
It seemed like it. And that's the other thing too. Maybe, you know, there could have been nothing nefarious with the 72 hour notice, but. The optics of it aren't great.
But, but I mean, like, like, so what, what kind of stuff are they drug testing for?
Exactly. And why is it happening?
No, but, but does 72 hours give them enough time to get out of their system?
Depends on what it is.
That's what I'm saying. Like, what are they testing for? And does 72 hours give it enough? And probably with the majority of stuff, it's going to give it enough time to get out of the system.
If it's like they're smoking marijuana or something, they're going to be fine. They're, they're not going to be fine. It'll still be there. But if they're doing something, you know.
Yeah, but that gives you a lot of time to get it out of your system, drink a lot of water, drink a lot of coffee.
Better chance.
Get some poppy seed muffins.
Especially if you haven't just yet, if you haven't just done it or something, you have a lot more time.
So in the NFL. You make a 90 yard run, break five tackles on the way, you're probably going to get a random drug test.
They're in the locker room after the game. Here you go.
Yeah. Right. So. That's probably more the practice. If you're going to have that policy where you do intend to drug test people, there probably needs to be a little more like that.
Yeah. No, I, I agree. That's probably just more consistent along the line, cross the line with that.
Right, for sure.
For a fact. Want to get into the shadow files?
Yeah, talk shadow files. Why don't you like these things?
Well, a, any file that is kept out of purview of HR, I guess you would say. And this goes back to the comment made, you know, like.
Well, maybe they didn't trust HR.
In the investigation is, from the HR director was, I didn't know that the Minot Police Department was doing their own exit interviews. Whether that person is terminated or, or they're resigning, but that's their exit interview. Well, here's the problem with that. If you weren't, if your department, if HR wasn't doing them, how did you not know? Like, was nobody doing them? Like, so. It doesn't make sense. No. Some people claim that these shadow files are a common practice. Okay, that. That seems sketchy to me.
Right. The investigator claimed that. Yeah.
Maybe there's good reason, but if there's going to be good reason for it, then there's a good explanation. Explain to people why they exist. But right now, if I were on council, I know I would be very skeptical of. Just, or, or an employee of the police department. Like, to me, that's, that's not right. Like, I, I would like to know if I were the employee or of the city. The only file that's associated with my job performance is my one and only HR file. Like, you have a separate file on that, shouldn't follow me.
Like, yeah, if someone were to pull your file, it should all come at once, not come from multiple places.
And I, I think in the report where it was talked about the shadow file, she was saying that. There might be conversations I had that was going to lead, but that you still need to document it. And she's saying that perhaps those would go into a different file. That some might would term a shadow file, but that's not necessarily intended to be a shadow file was basically the point that's not verbatim. Which is interesting though, because it was still like, almost like that stuff could be used to say you're fired. But it wouldn't be in your official HR file.
We just keep it to the side. Yeah.
And the, the problem that I had with it is not. That they were kept. Is that the fact that in the official HR file, the employee would get a glowing review. And then in the unofficial file, the, since the report calls it shadow file, we'll go with the term shadow file. There might be areas of improvement, basically. Not literally, there's not two different. Year in reviews, but what I'm saying is they might have like, had this conversation, or they might have some negative stuff that was in the unofficial one, but in the official one, it's, it's. What I heard is that they, they, the same employee would get.
It's two different stories.
Would, yeah, it's completely different stories being told. That's the part that's really.
Confusing part.
Yeah. Cause if you were, basically what I'm getting at is if you did have a process where.
And you just ended up keeping them separately.
And you keep them separately, but, but when you put them together, it tells the same story. You're like, okay, probably not a great process. I see what you guys are doing there. I think we should do it this way.
But so long as it all lines up, in theory, it's okay.
If there's two different stories going on, that's the part that's kind of weird.
Exactly. This is where you have a lot of those issues that could come up and a lot of the speculation as to what could be going on comes up. It's just. Just to reference the shadow, when those dark areas come to be, you don't know what could be happening. And a lot of times it probably is nothing, but just having that. Door ready to be opened is allows speculation.
I'll say this, and this will probably make me more enemies than friends with it, but it's not intended to be a like call out. Like a deal of shadow files, potentially something like that, Klug did not start.
No, I wouldn't.
Potentially that's been there for a while. Again, I, I have no idea, but what I'm saying is that's more of a process that's been around. That potentially just wasn't a good process that's been there for a bit.
It's just one of those things that is outside of the scope of policy that just kind of happens and. It's probably something that needs to just be wrapped up a little bit more.
Yep. Right. So like, like, and that's, that's the thing that's important to remember in the report is like. There are some specific things that are at Klug that potentially he needs to work on. But there is some stuff that's just a process that could have been there for a while that now he's the one that's overseeing it and it kind of investigated and it got brought to light. And it's like, all right, this is stuff we don't like. It's like, okay, well, we've been doing that for 50 years. Um, so I'm sorry, we can change, we can modernize our process there. It's not a good thing. It's, or, or he got abused now or whatever. It's time for us to go a different way.
How do you go from there at that point? Where does the city go from here at that point?
So we're done talking about details of the, like, I want to.
No, no, no. We, yeah, we can keep going on that. Yeah, by all means.
Yeah. Is there any, no, I'm not talking about shadow files, but is there any other key point in the investigation that you thought was noteworthy?
I, I like the suggestion of the, the biggest thing that stood out to me was the alternative reporting process.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Or whatever you, you know, you want to call it.
As long as it doesn't get away from the city council, I think that's good.
I think just, yeah, having that extra option would always be great.
Now, keep in mind, there's also, and I, uh, play devil's advocate here. I, I understand a little bit. The notion that a maybe city council, you shouldn't go after employees per se. Cause like without the civil service commission.
You could argue.
In theory, let's say I get elected mayor. I want to fire so and so and get my buddy, you know. That's not, that shouldn't be how it works. So you do have the civil service commission. What role do they play?
Yeah. So, okay, okay.
I think that's valuable. But also you need to be able to report. To elected officials.
Right.
You look at the flow chart. And where do they sit?
Right, yeah.
They're at the top. You need to be able to go there.
But I liked about the investigation that it went to city manager and city manager said, no, we're not doing this. And then. And then they brought new information. He's like, okay, we'll take a look into that. So, and what I'm saying is like, the city council didn't have the ability to, or maybe they do. But it wasn't used for sure in this instance where they were like, I want to get rid of this guy. So I'm just going to go and collect. Just try to collect information, all information I can about a certain person, so I can try to get their job. That's not what was the, done. But that's also not what the process allowed for. They went to the city manager and the city manager's like, yes or no. I think that's fair.
Cause at first he'd, the issues they originally brought to him, he said that these had been resolved. He knew about them.
We're not going to go back into it.
And then a couple of days later, they come back with new information that he had not heard about yet, that was mentioning some of the lost drugs. And that's, that's when it really kicked off at that point. I believe that's what it was about at least.
Yeah. Well done paraphrasing. Um, but the, what's this commission that you're talking about? Cause I don't think it's ever been talked about on this show.
Yeah, civil service commission.
Well, okay, it's interesting because. Keep in mind, a lot of people think Mr. Stewart, the city manager has. All the say, all the power. He doesn't. Like, I don't think a lot of people know this, but he cannot fire a city department head. That's not his call. In order for a department head to be let go. The city council. The city manager and the civil service commission. All essentially have to agree.
Have to approve.
So you have the civil service commission who is a committee appointed by the mayor. You know, and this, this is the kind of stuff that they hear. They don't meet often. I've been trying to pay attention when they meet and stuff. But also it gets even more interesting here because the only civilian who was named. In the investigation into the former city manager was the most recent appointee.
Interesting.
And I don't even know if Mayor Ross, you know, he made that appointee.
Okay, that was still under Mayor Ross?
That was one of his first.
First one, okay.
So the only persons, what, what?
It was the only civilian. Interviewed in Patricia Munson, I believe was her name, investigation into the former city manager. Where she made some pretty outlandish comments in those notes. And this, she was appointed to the civil service commission. So which is a three member commission.
And I have it as being Miranda Schuler, Lori Davis and Terry Fillion? Very good.
Well, Miranda, if we ever have questions about it, if you're watching, we'll be sure to reach out.
Okay, interesting. So, so basically the next steps.
So really my question here is, where do the recommendations, I'm guessing Mayor Ross. Made that appointment based on recommendations. Where do those recommendations come from? It's probably a city department head.
More often than not, you would, at least you could be easily led to assume that, yeah. Hundred percent.
Okay. So, yeah, I, I, we've, we've hammered out the report a lot, uh, the investigation a lot. So yeah, where do we go from here? What happens next?
Where does the city?
Hopefully, knock on wood, things get better.
Yeah. Do, do you think Klug retains his position?
Well, okay, here's the thing with HR policy and bad practices. If you have problems, look what it's cost us. Fifty thousand dollars for the investigation, plus another 50 that likely is on top of that. Uh, I don't, you guys are into sports and. You, you want to bet on the outcome of the, the suit against the city for wrongful termination by an employee? It's currently, I think he's going to win. So there's, like, eventually we got to say, when are we going to correct all this?
Yeah, at what point do we make it?
What point do you stop the bleeding? This costs taxpayers too.
Yeah, without a doubt.
No, it does.
And when, where do you start to stop the bleeding then?
Comes down to policy and practices.
Consistency with so much of it, I'm sure. Yeah. Being able to hammer things out consistently, enforce policy. Getting people to consistently enforce that policy and it, it's, it'll be a process. Yeah, I'm not sure. What will happen with Klug? It'll be interesting to see if he does end up sticking around. If he ends up just trying to retire early, or if he ends up getting repurposed, uh, positioned somewhere else in the department. Um, it'll be an interesting play because.
This is what I think. You guys aren't giving your answers. If I'll give an answer. Okay. And then maybe you guys will give an answer.
Go ahead.
I think, I don't know what will happen. So, but this is like what I most likely think will happen. Is one of two things, basically. One is. Early retirement. City says, well, honor your retirement. Let's just move on. And everyone's essentially happy. Probably avoids any wrongful termination and stuff like that. And there might be a clause, a document, that sign saying you will not sue.
We're going to let you retire early with pension and you can't come back at us.
Yeah, right. That'd be one option. A second option, they're not numerical order, is that he comes back with a plan. That says, these are some of the things I would address. These are, this is my plan to fix it. And that, this is how we'll proceed. I, I just don't see how. that this is how we'll proceed. I I just don't see how he could go and work in the department at a lower position, a different position, like you just mentioned.
Yeah.
I don't see how that works.
I, yeah, I'm not sure how it would work. It's one of those potentials that could happen.
It's right, something you had to mention, but I just don't see how it.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think it would be the first go to either.
I don't see how it works. Um, I think the most, in my opinion, the most likely is that they just come to basically a settlement and they just move on.
Yeah.
And it's not even, and the only reason that doesn't happen probably, or one of the big reasons, maybe not only, but one of the big reasons why that doesn't happen is because it would feel like, he might feel like he's admitting guilt. And the report does not, honestly, doesn't point that direction, that that there is something that he needs to be guilty of, if we're gonna use that word. So that would be the drawback of why that might not be used. I just, I think that's the best option, though. I think that's the best option.
I I can't.
And I, and I think we should hire somebody outside the.
City.
And I think, I think there needs to be more weight and city employees won't like this, but I think there needs to be more weight on candidates for manager positions that are not within the city. I I think that. And I I know that stinks because it means that there is a ceiling for employees and potentially there is still the ability for people within the city to rise up and progress through the deals, but I mean, I I worked at Menards when I was a very young person and you could not become general manager of the store that you were initially hired at.
Yeah, you have to go out from.
You have to go to a different, so I think it was, like, you could get to one manager position, but you basically couldn't get to the next manager position, I believe is basically how they had it set up.
Capped out at a certain point.
And you have to go to a different store, and you can come back to the store, I believe, but you have to have a stint somewhere else.
You have to.
Point of it is to protect people from playing favorites within the organization and getting rid of some of that potential drama.
Yeah.
And I think the city needs to look at stuff like that because it seems like there's a bit of this that comes up. I mean, one, one of the best, and I don't know his whole background, okay, so I'm going out on a limb, but one of the I think a lot of people agree, one of the best managers in the city, department managers in the city is David Lakefield. Like, the dude is top notch, knows his stuff, like, just great.
Always ready.
He was private sector before he had that position. So like, there's an example of somebody that doesn't maybe he worked at the city before. I have no idea what his full background is, but it doesn't.
He did, interesting.
It was a long time ago. It was, it was a while ago then, right?
I believe he was a police officer.
Okay, gotcha.
Fair enough.
Okay, so, but that, that's a place where it would almost potentially work. Where if you were a manager of a different department that you weren't brought up in, then that, that would be a thing that would probably be all right. But.
It's reasonable.
I I don't know. I know I rambled a little bit there. I think that needs to be looked at.
I I like what you have to say there. However, it's also a big cultural change because a lot a lot of how the city operates is to promote from within.
Yeah, right. But it's not working, I don't think.
No.
More often than not, it's not working. There are good examples of where it worked.
Of course.
So like, we started out saying good things about the city. Let's continue. Let's continue with that. Not trying to dog the city.
No, gosh, no, we love Minot. That's why we do this.
Yeah, there are places where it works, but I think the chance for it not working is way higher than it working. And you get complacency. That there, that's a whole, but that's a whole nother subject. But you do get complacency where if, if I work here for thirty years, there's a good chance I'll be at the whatever position that you were hoping to be at, and you're good to go.
You can just cruise through at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think the biggest thing that I agree with too, from that, your point, your takeaway there is if they decide to move on, I I think their best bet is to hire someone from outside of the city in Minot, even maybe even out of state, like I I think cuz clearly there's some kind of morale issue, maybe just changing leadership will fix the problem, but like Leif mentioned, sports more often than not, just changing the head coach doesn't solve the team's issues. So.
Typically, guy changes the owner too.
A lot of times, or at least manage.
The owner doesn't wanna give up that position.
Yeah, okay, yeah, but, but I mean, you, the barriers, people are saying, oh, we need a new owner. The Browns, like, they're somewhat, but they might need a new, you you have a lot of teams where you switch owners and it.
It might make the bigger difference.
Might make the bigger difference.
You look at Washington and.
They switched owners and things are starting to happen.
Things are turning around for them all of a sudden. And that's a whole bigger question in and of itself too.
But I don't even know who the owner is.
Exactly.
I was just goofing off. There is no owner of the city, so.
Lo and behold.
Maybe that's switching out the entire council. I, it's like, I have no idea what that means.
But and and to go off that, though, that's the thing. It's just you gotta be careful with where they come from. You you maybe, cuz you look at it, Minot's missing, how many cops are we down?
A lot.
So maybe you gotta change something up.
Like changing every day.
Maybe you should try to swing for the fences and get something out, someone completely outside the box to come in and try to switch stuff up.
Yeah, no, I think that's true. I think that's, I think that's important.
Hundred percent. And Leif, you, anything else you wanna go off on the police investigation?
It's pretty good to.
Think we did a good job wrapping it up there.
I I get lost with professional sports. When it comes to football, hockey, I know a thing or two about, but the football I don't. It's, for the sake of the city, I I wanna have full faith in the police department. That's, like, when it comes to government stuff, like your fire, police, or the nuts and bolts of it.
Yeah.
We have to get back to that point, cuz right now, like you said, it's a soap opera.
Yeah.
And.
At least it reads that way.
You just can't sweep stuff under the rug and say, hey, nothing to worry about here. That's not gonna do it.
Alderman Olson, Alderwoman Olson says, there are two applicants when Chief Klug was promoted, the other applicant had no agency leadership experience. Um, yeah, so.
It completely makes sense why they hired Klug at the time, like, by all stretch.
Yeah, but there were two other applicants who had um, ex- experience. There are two applicant, okay, so he was one of two. I thought it said there were two other. Um, and that's a very good point. It goes, potentially even goes to the area of and there probably was a lot. I don't know what all happened. There probably was a lot, but we've talked about, there was almost a hundred thousand dollars that went to, like, looking at hiring police officers, what are we doing there? It's a whole nother discussion, not the point of what we're trying to talk about today. And now, I, there was something I wanna talk about, now I went too far down that rabbit hole. Thanks, Tyler.
No, I, I know, I'll take.
So can I, I add just to this about the conclusion of Klug?
Yeah.
Well, soap opera. Reading the investigation, I I see it as you do. It doesn't say there's anything he's directly guilty of or or what have you.
For lack of a better term, yeah.
If he's reinstated or whatever the agreement is, do we lose more officers?
Right. And there's a chance we do.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's why this is, this is not easy stuff.
Yeah.
How about this, complete other take on it? We see Klug come back. He's, like Jonathan says, he has a plan. He's a completely new guy. He's energized and he wants to change things up, to make things better.
Yeah.
Maybe we can, I would love to see that too.
Yeah.
No guarantees it works, but I would love to see that effort if that's the case the city wants to happen.
Yeah, and there there would be potential for that. Um, we, we mentioned soap opera. I I think one thing that's really unfair about the entire investigation, like, if we went and chose a random organization in Minot and investigated them, like, what would you find?
You'll, you'll find.
Why, my point is like, you're gonna find people that are gonna be upset, you're gonna find people that are happy, you're gonna find people that have problems in their personal life. You're gonna find a lot of the same factors that are in the police investigation, you're gonna find in every single organization. Now, there are things that are above that that were found in the police investigation that may not be found in every organization. But there's a lot of like core factors when you're working with people, that those things are gonna exist in every single organization. But right now, they're being be, there's a lot of attention that's being drawn to it.
Overemphasized.
It's, yeah, it's being a little over, overemphasized probably, and and maybe that's my hot take, I don't know. But um, I I think that is important too. Like, let's realize, we are messing with people here.
No, a hundred percent.
These are not robots. So there are personal lives that happen, there are situations, and I have a lot of opinions on that that I don't need to bring into it here.
That's again, a whole nother.
I think, I think that's important for you to remember, though.
Yeah, undoubtedly so. And it'll be interesting to see what they play out from there.
Yeah.
So you're saying if we went to investigate retail store XYZ?
Yeah.
You would run into.
Some kind of.
So what I'm saying is you're gonna have, like, there was something, one of the situations that was really, has taken a lot of negative press, as it should, is like the amount of relationship deals that are going on in the city. Like, that was really surprising, right? If you go to the retail store, there's a chance you're gonna find a lot of weird stuff going on.
Similar things happening.
When it anticipate when you're just going to said retail store and shopping, right? It feels like perhaps it was maybe overdone, like, there's a lot of it in the city, but you're gonna just when you're working with people, things are going to happen, is all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. I'm not condoning, I'm not coming out against it. I'm just saying, a lot of things are gonna happen.
Saying it is a soap opera is different, cuz I don't know if it actually, it it odds of it being a soap opera on a day to day thing is completely bare minimum, zero percent probably.
But.
The way the report was presented.
I wanna interrupt you, though. The reason why you think it that way is because of the media out there that
Us.
The, no, the actual soap operas out there, that say when stuff like this happens, it is day to day. And so that's planted in your mind?
Because the, the whole report consists of incidences from the past four or five years.
Right, but in our mind, it happened in a week.
Exactly. And so when you condense it into a hundred fifteen page report, it seems like it's a soap opera going on there. You put it to a day to day effect, it's not nearly that extensive.
I agree with you to an extent.
Yeah.
However, in a previous life, I was a manager at a restaurant and bar. So I'm used to the soap opera.
Yeah, there was soap opera.
There was issues that came up, but never I lost fifteen grams of heroin.
That, and that, and I'm, I'm saying that there's some very specific things that are outside of the realm of that.
Yeah.
But, but.
Generally.
But the, some of the feedback that I've heard is more about this dated hay stuff that's like, that's part of almost like, like even a culture, like your culture at work. So when you're in a very, like, that's a very high stress environment.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Okay, so when you're in a very.
Easy to be a police officer, I know that.
And the police officers aren't expecting this, but, but like from us on the outside, when we're reading it like, oh, there's these comments that are being made and stuff like that. You don't know the pressures that were presented during that week. You really don't. And there can be, you can be at a very high tension spot in work and things are very direct. And it seems that, I mean, there are times when I come across very, very direct, and people probably think I'm mad, and I'm not. I'm very focused. I know what needs to get done. I have the goal, that's all I'm working towards, and I probably should be nicer, right?
You're an intense guy. It happens. I understand. You have the ability to be.
Yeah, and so, so to then go and say, well, that's a, now I can be better. I'm not saying that that it can't, but to then say that, that, that right there creates a hostile environment is too far. But there are things that could lead to a hostile environment. I'm not trying to put the whole investigation off the hook, or or the whole complaints off the hook, but what I'm saying is like, also, let's look at this in the realm of life and reality.
That's a great way to.
Of how the similar things do happen in other places, and it's fine with it. There are things that go above it.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely, definitely a few things that go above it.
Yeah, and there are, there are, I, thousand percent.
But generally, generally speaking, I think you make a good point there. With it, it's, you you can take these instances and spread it out across a spectrum of fields and you'll find similar things if you go back five years.
Yeah, right. Leadership matters. The, the
Communication.
Communication matters, but, but your ability to connect with people makes all the difference. And something that, and this is just live, I, not necessarily even talking about the investigation, obviously is referring back to that, so that's why we're on the topic. But when you have goodwill stored up with somebody because you have been consistent, because you have been the same guy to them every single time, same person to them every single time, because you have always been fair with them because there's this trust that's built, this goodwill that's built.
Good rapport.
Then you can have your stern moments, and it's not you're a terrible person.
Be constructive.
Yeah, right. And and, but you can even have an off moment. You can be a moment where you're raised very, very stern, and it's not even and you both are like, that was a bad moment, and you come back and you're sorry, and they're like, I get it. We have those times in life. Like, there's goodwill that's built up, is what I'm saying. And that's important in leadership. It doesn't matter where you're at.
Self, self-awareness helps with that. Yeah, very much so.
That's a lot of talking on that.
Yeah.
True.
You did a good job. You, you matched your juice to your shirt almost. Well done.
Now, if you just turn up the heat, you know.
Oh, man, I, we do. It it is turned up.
This is up. That's the worst part.
Hey, I'll take the good audio.
One thing at a time.
Hey, our office isn't flooded anymore. It's mostly put back together.
It looks better than it did before the flood at this point.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Looks great.
Things are happening. If anybody wants a table, kitchen table, we're selling it.
Couple chairs too, I think.
Yeah, it comes with four bent, four stools, spinning, they're great.
Hit Jonathan up.
Yeah, hit us up. They'll get that out of the uh.
We'll shout you out in a video if you want.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll be fun.
Yeah.
Do you wanna do a hot take today?
All right, uh, you go ahead.
Do you wanna do them? Okay.
I have no idea. Do you have a hot take?
I have.
Well, I'll just piggyback on what you said. Okay, I I had a hockey background, coaching, right? So, a lot about leadership is the expectations. As a coach, the expectations players and other participants can expect of me, right? Now, after coaching for seventeen years, there's a lot of different stuff. I was kinda proud of them, some I wasn't.
Right.
But recently, one kid now who has moved on to play college hockey remembers me because I had lost most of my vision. And I reamed him about something I thought he did.
Oh, nice.
Okay, it turns out he didn't.
Yikes. That feels good.
Best thing I did was apologize to him in front of the whole team.
Own up to it, yeah.
And exactly, own up to it. And he remembers that to this day.
You, you wanna know something? There, there's a person in my life that is important, that we had a conversation that was very intense, and when it was all said and done, they came and apologized to me about it, and I was not in a position where they needed to apologize to me about it. And that's, that's always stuck with me. So that's a, that's a really good point. Is that ability to own up to it and be like, hey, man, I I was wrong on this one, I'm sorry.
It's a great way to look at it. Hundred percent, it does. It can, it helps build relationships across the board.
Yeah, makes you, makes you real with the person.
Well, I'll have my, mine's gonna be a little lighter. So my hot take, so the best corporate holiday we're given, so like you have New Year's, Christmas, Memorial Day, the hall, uh, Fourth of July, all those.
I don't give you any holidays.
Uh-oh, well, no. But in theory, those big dates that vast majority of people get off, the best one is Thanksgiving, and here's why. Without very much work, you can make that into a five day holiday. You take Wednesday, mo- most places give you Friday off. You take Wednesday off, you have five days off, you eat food almost the whole time. You see people you love and enjoy hanging out with, and you have a five day weekend.
Did he just make himself unhireable?
Probably.
No, I don't think so, but I think he's wrong. Cuz if you work for the city of Minot, you gotta get that dumpster back.
That's right, on Friday.
You gotta come, you gotta come in and do it. You gotta give the dumpster back.
Kudos to uh.
Absolutely love it. They even had to work on Saturday, man.
You're darn right. Gosh, see, that's, that's, that's why it's a hot take.
So uh, whatever you do as a profession, do that. Don't work for the city.
Yeah, I, I see, I'm lucky. To be fair, I'm very lucky in what I do. I'm able to very much dictate my own schedule, don't get paid time off, but I can book however I want.
So does that make you a dictator?
Sure. Why not? Only with my schedule.
Nice, no, city, city is a good place to work. It, it's good people.
Generally, yeah, no, a hundred percent.
After all that, it's good people. Wow, I shot myself.
What's your hot take? Get off that.
Yeah. Dude, I didn't have a hot take prepared today, so we're going on the spot.
It's okay.
I still, I still, I still am not sure about yours, though, either, so.
It's not a hot take? Do you think most people agree with that?
No, I'm just not sure that Thanksgiving is the best corporate holiday given.
Why it's a hot take.
The reason why, basically what I heard from you is the reason why the best corporate holiday is not even at all anything to do with Thanksgiving. It's purely the ability to get a long weekend.
It has a lot to do with Thanksgiving too, because you get some of the best food of the year. You get turkey.
And, and you're saying, no, turkey's nasty. All right, get off that. He's, he's doing that to try to make me hot.
That, that was.
You're saying that you get Wednesday off?
You can take Wednesday off.
So you can take Wednesday off, and then typically you're gonna get Thursday and Friday off.
Love, yeah, you'll get, o- odds are you get Thursday off, and a lot of places give you Friday off, and then you have the weekend. Obviously, this isn't a blanket thing for every profession everywhere, but generally speaking, I think it makes for the easiest way to get a very long weekend. You get to enjoy great food. If you like football like I do, you get a lot of football in that timeframe, and you get to be around people you enjoy.
Isn't that crazy, though? So we got rid of, why did we get rid of Black Friday? Like, Black Friday's not what it used to be, right?
I think so much of that happened when online retail became a lot more popular.
I don't think so.
I, I think it started going downhill when businesses started opening up on Thanksgiving.
Yeah, and people started getting frustrated.
Upset with that, yeah.
And so instead, what his, what Kyler's solution is, used to be there was like one football game on Thanksgiving and then maybe two. Now he just wants a full day of football on his day off, so he still doesn't have to spend time with family.
Game on Friday even.
It's ridiculous. We still don't get to get, have quality family time. And what about all the players that are having to spend time away from their family? You don't think about that?
They are properly compensated to be away from their family.
So if you make enough money, family doesn't matter. That's what, that was Kyler's hot take.
If you make enough money.
If you make enough money, family does not matter.
I love it. If that's, if we bleed it down to the wire, that's what it comes to. If you, if you have enough money that you can be properly compensated and not care about family.
There we go. I don't, I don't even know if I have a hot take after that. I think that was so good. There is no, no hot take for me. You know what? I was trying to come up with one. I don't have one.
It's fine. It's okay. We made it work. It was a long weekend. We were doing things with the family. I think this was, this was a long episode. We had a good talk today.
It was good, but I mean, I don't know if it's good, but it was a long episode.
It was, I enjoyed it.
We have to use the same standards that we use for city council on ourselves, okay?
Leif, any far- final parting words?
I'm not coming back. It's a five hour meeting.
We'll be here for three hours.
I love it.
But you might be back every first Tuesday following the city council meeting of the month.
Sounds good.
I love it. I love. Come, come deeper into winter, we'll figure it out.
When it's negative two, well, well, when it's negative thirty out, we'll have it figured out, for sure. Twenty-four degrees, nope. Negative thirty, definitely.
Different ballgame. When this stuff starts like half freezing up, that's when we have the issues.
All right, sounds good. Thank you all for watching this episode. Uh, be sure to like and subscribe, become part of the Decoding Community. We, we should be back Thursday eight AM. And hopefully we'll have some other good podcasts out there for you. Thanks for watching. Have a great day.